...in such a way that everyone can see that you are honorable and do all that you can to live in peace with everyone. Romans 12. Now, we've all seen examples of ostracism in news accounts, online and social media, and maybe perhaps it's happened to you. These days, they call it cancel culture. Typically, if an individual who is deemed to have acted or spoke in a questionable or controversial manner, or in a manner not consistent with the beliefs and viewpoints of those doing the canceling. It can involve companies, celebrities, politicians, countries, or even your neighbor or a family member. Over the last few decades, the political cycles in our country have been quite unsettling in their rhetoric. Many will say it's because of this individual or that one, but I am old enough to remember the horrible rhetoric during the Reagan years that turned violent and almost took the life of that president, not even 20 years after, to our nation's horror, we lost President Kennedy to political violence. Culture was seen at its collective worst in the riots of the summer of 2020 all across America, where groups intent on their own form of vigilante justice were hostile to the authorities and anyone who held a position not in line with theirs. In the last 12 months, it doesn't look like we've learned anything at all in the way that we treat and talk about those who differ from us. But God has a different idea. He wants your life to be counter to the popular cancel culture. Christians have been called to love one another and also to love the lost, not ostracize them. While cancel culture holds grudges, God tells us believers to forgive one another, Colossians 3:13. While cancel culture strokes rage, God says to let go, Ephesians 4. While cancel culture bands together in bitterness, Scripture tells you to assemble with one another, loving as the Lord loves, and encourage one another in Hebrews 10. The precepts of cancel culture are the total opposite of Christianity, and we are called to be countercultural. Ask God for the strength and wisdom to enable you to follow the mandate that Paul gives us all in Romans. As far as it depends on you, live peaceably with all. Let's pray. Father, we pray for all of those who are caught up in this cancel culture, Lord, those who are on the receiving end as well as giving. Father, we just ask that you would be with each and every one of us. While we have differing views and differing opinions, Lord, help us all to be about the people's work. Father, we thank you for the men and women who have been elected to serve. We thank you for all who come to share voice in this meeting tonight, but most of all, we thank you, Lord Jesus, for your sacrifice. Lord, we ask you'd be present and that we would conduct ourselves in such a way that is honoring and pleasing to you in and out of this room. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thanks, sir. I'm glad there's a second Lions fan in Effingham County. Very good. Moving on to agenda approval, consideration of a resolution to approve the agenda. I'm sorry, guys, I'm getting ahead of myself. Please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
Now, moving on to item number five, 2.0, agenda approval, consideration of a resolution to approve the agenda. Madam clerk, do you have any noted changes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and board members, we do have several changes. We'll begin on page one, under consent agenda. It is a payment consideration to approve to allocate opioid settlement funds in the amount of $4,500. The sheriff has requested that this item be postponed until June 3rd. Going along to page two, under the consent agenda, item number four, consideration to approve to renew the clinical services agreement between Effingham County and the Effingham Hospital, Inc. Staff has requested to remove this item from the human resources standards of practice. Staff, commissioners have requested to remove this item from the agenda. On to page three, under planning board items. Item number five, consideration to approve an application by Caitlin Cavallo for variance. The agenda notes that this property is at 1321 Shawnee Egypt Road. That is a typographical era. The address is 120 Francis Street. Commissioner DeLoach would like to postpone this item until June 3rd. So this will be both item number five and number six under the planning board agenda, and those are your changes.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything further from the, from the board? If not, I'll request a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the noted changes.
All in favor? Unopposed, the motion carries. Moving on to our minutes, consideration to approve the May 6, 2025 Board of Commissioners Work Session and Regular Meeting Minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second. All in favor? Unopposed, motion carries. Public comments. Comments shall pertain to the agenda items only. Should you wish to make remarks, clearly state your full name and to the microphone before commencing to speak. The agenda packet for this meeting is posted on the county's website. Any additional documentation presented at the meeting shall be submitted to the clerk for receipt, recording, and distribution to the board. Moving on to item number nine, which is our consent agenda. This section shall include all routine items from which there will be no discussion. Should a need arise for a debate, the item can be moved to the appropriate area of the agenda.
Chairman, I'd like to recuse myself from the consent agenda because of item number three. So I'll just pull myself out of the whole voting for that.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Wait for her to leave and... Commissioner Hellman has removed herself due to a conflict of interest. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve as presented. Second.
All in favor? Unopposed, the motion carries. Moving on to new business. Item number one. Consideration to approve the first reading to amend section 5.1 Agricultural Districts, 5.9 Neighborhood Commercial District, 5.10 General Commercial District, 5.11 Highway Commercial District, 5.12 Industrial Districts, and 4.1A Table of Permitted Uses for the Effingham County Code of Ordinances.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Chelsea Fernal, Planning Manager. So as you are aware, especially from last meeting with our workshop staff and the steering committee that was appointed in November or December, and the county manager have been diligently working to bring these before you. At the, briefly go over those again if you would like. That way we can refresh. So our overall changes initially, if there wasn't an intent statement for the zoning district, we added one or we worked to make it more, you know, inclusive of what exactly we, our goal is for that zoning district based on the comprehensive plan. We reference the table of permitted uses, so taking a lot of that language out of the ordinance and, you know, specifically referencing that table of, as you'll see here, is that for AR1. The minimum lot area is still five acres, but a maximum of two residential units are permitted per lot. They may consist of two principal dwellings or one principal dwelling and an accessory dwelling unit. You know, the road frontage is still, has, has actually changed to 100 feet from 150 feet. And most of that, with the exception of the maximum building height, has changed. It is proposed at 40 feet now. And then your proposed AR2 standards, again, still that minimum lot area of one acre, but one principal residence and then one accessory dwelling unit would be allowed. Taking out the without public water lot area or the with public water and sewer lot area, it would all need to be that one acre. So that is, and then again, changing that maximum building height to 40 feet. So those are your proposed standards for AR1 and AR2.
Now, is AR2 going forward, that is going to be for family directly or settling in a state?
Yes, sir. And within the intent language, and I can read that for you as well, it specifically says that this district is exclusively designated for family or state subdivisions, ensuring that development remains consistent with the rural character. And then under that, there is a 5.2.2 that specifically states that a signed affidavit shall be required for this zoning district, certifying that the subdivision is intended for that family or state subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to know though, because, because I sort of ran into, we went into an issue. It, it, it did go to the family, but then after about a year or so, it was sold to a non-family. So, so, you know, this affidavit is just in perpetuity? I mean, does it just go on forever or, I mean, sooner or later it's going to change, right?
And I'll say, you go.
At that point in time, they have to say that it is for family, but once it's turned over to the family, I would think they could sell it.
Well, that's exactly, what I'm saying is, is this a way to get around?
They're already getting around. Once it's somebody else's, they have control.
And that's the issue is that, you know, we can kind of, I mean, if the affidavit is accurate when they sign it, it's valid. But if they, if they change at a latter point, yes, there is a way to get around it by saying that, you know, it's an estate, it's divided up, the piece went to me, and it was only one acre. We're a little over an acre, but as soon as I get it, I don't live here, I want to sell it. It could still be done. But, but the, but it's just a little, you know, it, it does create a little bit more of a barrier to... But, but the, but it's just a little, you know, it, it, it does create a little bit more of a barrier to, to it than, than exists now, which is really none. Right now, anybody for any reason can subdivide to an acre, actually a half an acre, if it has water on it, right? If, if, if it has a community water on it. So, so we, the concern was on this is that traditionally, that is what AR two has been used for, right? When, for years, you know, since I've started here, a vast majority of the AR one to AR two subdivisions were, hey, I've got an AR two piece of land, I want to subdivide so my, I can give a piece to my son. And more recently is where you've really seen the folks come in and actually want to subdivide for profit or subdivide for development. And so when the, when the steering committee was talking about this, that was really where we were torn, is that we don't want to take that ability away from folks who want, who have traditionally valid reasons to do it because of this new, this kind of new need or desire to subdivide. Is it perfect? No, but does it, does it provide some level of protection? Yes. And if you want to do it unrestricted, then you have to go to AR three. And then it's just a, it's just a larger parcel requirement. So rather than one acre, it's two and a half acre and you're not, and it doesn't have to be in a state, does not have to be for family.
And, and I'm, this was done before I got on the board, but my understanding was that we were going to try to protect the third district, right? And not let it be broke up into these smaller parcels. And I feel like that AR two and the new AR three is undermining that completely. Because it's going to open the door to, you know, you, you talk about one acre lots here on AR two, okay? Where, where, you know, if you will go subdivide it in half, well, I can see maybe that for family, but, but you're still looking at two and a half acres with a five acre plot. But, you know, you, you just, you're just saying, okay, I'm going to let you subdivide into five acres. So, I mean, you're going to go up there to the third district that we're trying to protect. I know, Mr. Boy, just hold on. But I, I just feel like if, if in one case you're saying, we want to keep the third district rural and that's what's staring at us on our comprehensive map, right, future plan? But yet you're going to put these two things in, that's going to undermine that and allow that type of development to go into the third district. That's my concern. Which one are we going to do? So it's your district, Jamie, but.
Yeah, well, just respectfully, I, I disagree with you on your take on the AR three. We don't have anything in place right now to protect District Three and this two and a half acres is going to protect that. Growth is coming. Lot of my longtime constituents there, they don't want to hear that, but it's, it's going to happen at some point, whether that's ten, twenty years. But this here AR three is the first thing I've seen where we've actually are making a move to help protect that. Can you say, keep it AR one, keep it at that size? I mean, maybe you could, but I, I think you're going to run into additional issues on that. But that's just my take. I, I think AR three was a good idea and I fully support it.
Beth, you know me. The word lit sets me afire. Don't, and the protect, don't worry about me, it's mine, let me make my decision. I don't need five people sitting up here to decide what I want to do with my property. If I want to get it to my kid, cut it into two and a half acre lots, it is my property and I respect that for anybody that owns property. But this is just a step and I understand completely, but.
Well, like I said, I'm, I'm just, I'm just going by what y'all apparently voted on several years ago when you put the future.
Because as of today's.
That's, that's what I'm looking at.
Because as of today, somebody could put a subdivision with smaller lots. I mean, we're putting the two and a half acre lots in there, so that's, I feel like a lot more protection.
AR one, two, and three are still agriculture on the future land use map, right?
That's correct, right.
They're all for housing. I mean, and, and that's what, what you think of agriculture, you know, it's different, different people.
I see a lot of very nice one acre subdivisions. I'd love to see more of them. I'm not, I'm not interfering with that. I'm just going back to what were y'all doing when you said you were going to try to keep that in five acre lots up there? Y'all voted on that, not me. I'm just, I'm just asking. Now you're undermining that in my opinion. But anyway, I've had my.
How, how are we undermining that? It's AR, it's AR and District Three, so how are we undermining that?
Because of the, because of the size of the lots, because of the size of the acreage.
We've never said it was all going to remain AR one. I mean, there's other lots that's been, that's not AR one. I mean, every parcel, I mean, there's parcels up there less than five acres.
Well, I'm sure there is. I'm just talking about the future.
Okay, well, I've said what I've got to say.
Me too. Say what I got to say too.
So the future land use map here, I'm just looking at it myself right now. In the light green area, just, I don't see the legend here, so fill me in on that real quick.
Yeah, so the light green area.
Or excuse me, darker than light, but not dark green.
Okay. So, and you kind of see it is generally around one nineteen where that is. There are obviously some residential subdivisions north on the north side of one nineteen, so it may go a little bit, a little bit north of one nineteen. And so south of one nineteen, the intent of that is since ninety percent of the county, I think the last check may not be exactly ninety percent, is still zoned in some sort of AR form, right? And so what we wanted to do is you can't just, if you just say that that's the residential area, you know, it, it doesn't promote, you know, continuing some agriculture, continuing agricultural uses there. So it provides a mix and so we call that agricultural residential. And so, or residential agricultural, the light green.
Found the legend, so I see agricultural is to the, when I say the northwest.
And the north, the darker green. And so if we were to try and push that, trying to assign classifications to that, the lighter green would be AR one and the Rs, right? Where the dark green would be predominantly and very rarely not anything other than AR, AR zoning. And so that's kind of one of the reasons that we're, we, you prefer not to have R one, let's say, that could be larger subdivision lots in the green area, the dark green area, so that we, we reserve the dark green area for AR zoning.
Gotcha.
Which is predominantly agricultural.
So our intent by our future land use as it sits right now is to keep that dark green area AR one through if we approve AR three.
AR three, that's right.
Excuse me, darker green, but not the darkest one.
Yes, sir, and so that AR three residential district, it does provide, again, the minimum lot area of two point five acres. Like AR one, this does allow maximum of two residential units per permitted lot. So this can be two principal dwellings or one principal dwelling and one accessory dwelling unit. We used the setbacks, and I say we as the steering committee and staff, used the setbacks from AR one and adjusted that a little bit. As you'll see, the rear yard setback is a little smaller and so is the side yard setback for the secondary street. But the maximum principal building height is forty feet. So, and then moving on. Here's our current standard for our commercial district, so your current B one and B two and B three standards. So this is what the ordinance currently says. And then these are your proposed standards, so your proposed B one standard, again, making sure that all the minimum lot area, whether it have public water and sewer, public water, or it be on a private system, it just needs to meet the required design standards. So that being, you know, your buffer ordinance, your table of permitted uses, and then of course, you know, any further standards that are proposed. So the maximum building height being thirty feet and then within the B one, a total, total maximum square footage for a building footprint of eight thousand square feet. Moving on to B two, again, you know, meeting the required design standards for your lot area and width, and then your maximum building height as well, and then the total maximum square footage for building footprint being fifty thousand square feet. B three, again, just meeting the required design standards, not having a set maximum square footage for building footprint. Along with those standards, we did add some green space requirements. At least fifteen percent of the total area must be designated as green space. This is something we don't have currently in our commercial districts. And then at least fifty percent of the street frontage shall be landscaped to enhance highway aesthetics and contribute to overall visual quality of the corridor. So especially if these are commercial properties not within our commercial corridor district already. And then we also have a sidewalk requirement. So sidewalks shall be required along public street frontages within commercial districts and then doing a payment in lieu of construction, if no existing sidewalk is located within five hundred feet of the subject property. Fully knowing that that type of payment could be used to then connect properties so we're not, you know, seeing that space.
And I think one thing that I also think needs to be brought up, which is kind of one of, and it's actually brought its more recently in some of these projects that we have, is the ability to do residential in B districts. That has been removed. And so that if you want to do, let's say, a, some sort of live-work type scenario where you have business on the, on the base floor and then residential apartments on top, then you can simply do that in a PD, in a PD district. So we've run into situations where folks have zoned something for a business use that never got done and then they come in and do high-density apartments on it. And so this kind of eliminates that, so you know the intent of the property when it's rezoned, when it's initially rezoned. But, but that's what probably another larger change. And I really say that with this, the, the steering committee spent a lot of time determining on the table of permitted uses, what they wanted to see in a B one, a B two, and a B three. I think the one they spent more time on is B one, because they really viewed B one as these kind of neighbor, rural neighborhood commercial type businesses that are, that, you know, that can be used in like those kind of rural nodes that we have on the, like, on the comprehensive plan and, and are not made for like, you know, any sort of retail, major retail type operations. It's just those, those little community businesses, convenience stores, that sort of thing, that, that they wanted to limit B one to. And then B two and B three somewhat similar, although you can see the intensity differences. And I think the key, what's going to be the limiting factor to BT, B two is your, is your square footage. Even though fifty thousand's a lot, it does, you know, prevent, you know, larger entities from trying to squeeze into a B two. But the TPU is really where you have to look at under the B standards to really determine what's acceptable to be in, in each, in each category.
I got a question on this sidewalk requirement. So, so there's a piece of commercial property on a corner. The entirety of this, on a road frontage is expected to have a sidewalk if there's no sidewalk within five hundred feet? If not, there's a fee, where's that money going? Does it sit in the general fund?
Yeah, so no, what we're going to, what we're setting up is a, is a, is a sidewalk kind of a, a fund account. And the purpose of it, and we've run into this a lot, where we will get, you know, there's going to be a lot of patches of sidewalks. And then there's going to be a patch that, like, they'll never develop the property because it just doesn't have enough wetlands, I mean, it's got too many wetlands in the back, or it's got a, or it might have a cellular tower on it, right? So it's never going to get kind of redeveloped. And so it allows the county to go in there on the right of way and use these funds to kind of fill that gap and make the connection point. I mean, that's kind of the, the thought on, on what the steering committee's, you know, view of the sidewalk fund was.
Question I have for your ARs, tree conservation or preservation, do we have anything built in for that?
And we did attempt to do, we, we didn't put it in the, in the zoning classifications, but we do want to revisit the tree preservation ordinance. Again, I think, you know, I think the last time we, we talked about it in the workshop, you know, the concern is with, you know, is it, you know, do you incentivize or do you, or you just kind of regulate, right? And so that, that was where we kind of, the, I think the board kind of got stuck on, is which way do we do it? On the ARs, we really don't do anything there. I can tell you when it comes to the Rs, because that involves a lot of clearing. There's going to be a more intense street tree programs in that. But I really think when it comes to, particularly when it comes to things like, across all districts, any development, there needs to be, at the very least, incentives to try and save grand trees when, you know, when possible. But I don't think it's, but we didn't put it in the classification because we think it should apply to, should apply to all classifications, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, if, if the intent is to, you know, in our future landly uses to be an agricultural area, would expect some green, I'd imagine.
Right.
So just something to ponder.
All right, and then moving to our industrial, so right now, the ordinance has two, has a light industrial standard and a heavy industrial standard, but it is all under the I one as a whole. So this is your current light industrial standard. And this is your current heavy industrial. And again, looking at the table of permitted uses, we did keep I one as a district that is on the table of permitted uses. And we can explain that here in a second. But one of the, the biggest changes in industrials that we are going to break out, light industrial and heavy industrial, there'll be two separate zoning districts. So this is the proposed light industrial. So again, it does reference, and unfortunately can't see it here, but it does reference above this section, you know, to the TPU in that consistent manner like the other zoning districts do. It does provide that minimum lot area, your building line width, and then the steering committee did suggest not having a maximum building height for this. But also in industrial, like in the commercial districts, creating that green space requirement. So at least fifteen percent of the total hour, area, excuse me, shall be designated as green space, which can include the landscaped areas, the buffers, tree plantings, bio swells, and then your pedestrian friendly places. So within that industrial zoning district. And so then this, again, is your proposed heavy industrial standard. So again, the fifteen percent green space requirement for heavy industrial as well.
And I think the point to bring up here is that the key differentiator besides the table of permitted use is in a different section of the code, and that is the buffer requirement. Uh, is in a different section of the code, um, and that is the buffer requirements. Uh, and so the buffer requirements, um, for light industrial versus heavy industrial, I mean, they're, they're essentially double. Um, uh, and so, uh, because, um, in the earlier amendments that we did to the code. We switched from use to what determines buffer from the use of the property to the zoning of the property. Uh, and so, um, uh, so the key thing is if you're categorized as a heavy industrial property. Um, your, your buffer requirements are going to be substantially higher. Uh, and that's kind of, that's how it is somewhat right now. Is that if you're on the list of light industrial uses under I one, you have a. Um, you have a buffer requirement that's fifty percent, what, then what is your he- uh, heavy industrial determined use? But the difference is, um, you can put on any I one zoned property. Um, a, um, you know, a, uh, a, you know, a, a light little warehouse that really doesn't have a lot of traffic. Or you can put a chemical factory. Um, uh, and it, uh, and there's nothing you can really do about it. Um, other than to say that one has to have larger buffers than the other. Uh, and then by this, it gives, i- the purpose of this is to give the board more control. Um, so when someone comes up, they're not just asking for some blank check on, um, on industrial zoning. You can, you can limit them to light industrial zoning, which will restrict them to certain uses. Or a, uh, or they can request heavy industrial zoning, which are more intense uses. But they're going to have to make that decision at the rezoning process, um, versus, you know, based on who puts a, um. Who puts an offer on a property. Um, and so that's, that's kind of the purpose here. Uh, is to, uh, is to give, uh, is to give the board more control. Because the constant complaint that we hear is you came in and said you were going to do this with the property. Uh, and then you then decided to do something completely different. And there's not much you can do at that point, um, because you're. Uh, because it's already got the, um, uh, the zoning rights attached to it.
I kind of questioned. The half acre on a heavy industrial. How would that? I mean, that just looks small to me. It would really be.
We can probably, um, minimum lot area, yeah, I, and we can, and I. The only way that that would work is if it was.
Industrial, heavy industrial on both sides.
If it was an industrial park, right, where you, where you had industrial on both sides, and that could be.
And I think that's acceptable.
Contiguous. Properties that were, what are your buffer requirements at that time?
So what, um, uh, for, for contiguous properties, when it comes to buffers, the. Um, the buffers generally, um, are like industrial to industrial. You know, we will have, you know, like fifteen feet. Twenty-five feet. Uh, twenty-five foot buffer, one of the things that we're going to recommend in a future meeting is to change that from. Undisturbed to permit when it's industrial to industrial or business to business. Um, to, to allow, um, landscaped, um, buffers as well, uh, or undisturbed. And the reason is, it just looks awkward, um, you know, when, when you have two businesses on twenty-one. That aren't in a commercial corridor and then you've got like fifteen feet, which is the B to B, um, buffer. Of like scrub pines in between, in between the two of them, it would allow them to do that. But, um, but anytime that any property goes against a more intense use. Um, even a B to an I or a, uh, or B to an R. Um, then the full buffer undisturbed has to stay in place. And so we're, that, that's not on this recommendation, but it is something that we. Uh, and the steering committee discussed, um, as, uh, being more visually. And, uh, and operationally efficient, uh, visually pleasing and operationally efficient. Um, but, you know, to your point, uh, Commissioner Kiefer, I, you know, uh, thinking about it, they did bring up that point about the half acre industrial. And I think it really like, if you've got an industrial park and somebody wants to put a, like a gas station in there or a use. Um, that supports this, but the industrial prop, uh, park owner does not. Um, maybe the covenants won't allow it. You know, they, they can do it, um, but it can only be used, you can only do it if you've, you're surrounded by industrial property. Because your buffers would be too, uh, excessive, excessive anywhere else.
Do we still have the, uh, B R M ordinance?
Yes, and so that's in the buffer part of the ordinance. Um, and so that you all have approved, um, um, I don't know, several months ago. Um, and so, um, so. That doesn't change.
So then, um, one of the last things on here is your table of permitted uses, which, um, you should have in your packet. Um, it's a little extensive for a PowerPoint slide, um, but. As we've spoken quite extensively tonight on, um, you know, there are many changes and, um. Suggestions from the steering committee on the table of permitted uses, um, we spent, um. Couple meetings going through it extensively, um, because to understand the zoning districts, I think you have to. Truly understand the uses that, you know, we would want in those zoning districts. Um, so, um, if you have any questions on that, please.
And I, and I'll tell you a couple of things. Well, first of all, this is a, a first reading, second reading cannot be tonight. Um, and Commissioner Burdette, um, did, uh, express, uh, some concerns on some things related to the table of permitted uses. And so we will actually, um, um, uh, have that in your next staff report. Uh, for an amendment, um, to prior to second reading. Um, uh, and if you all wanted, uh, wanted to see something of concern as well. Um, just let us know, and I can tell you, and I, and this is what really got us moving in the steering committee. Uh, was when we, um, just came to the conclusion that we may not always be getting it right on the TPU. Um, but we can always change it if there's something that we're not seeing there. Right? So, um, you may run into a condition where someone squeezes into a definition there. That was a definition that, that, that's a, that's an actual use that you didn't foresee, right? Then in that case, you can then go back, um, and, um, and amend the table of permitted uses to make it conditional. Or remove it in that zoning district completely. Um, but it's a, it's certainly a lot more comprehensive, um, than what we've had. Um, uh, than anything we've had in the past. Uh, and to back up what Chelsea said, we went through every single line. In the, um, in the steering committee, and so, um, uh, they, they, they were. Uh, very thorough, to say the least.
See beauty schools.
Yes, uh, one of the other, um, really awesome changes that I thought the committee, um, suggested. Was as you'll see on your table of permitted uses, um, it's not filled in right now, but it does say reference section. Our plan is to go back for each of those items, once the definitions are approved and put the actual number of that definition. That way it's easy for folks who are looking to say, well, what exactly is that item? What do they mean by that? And they have that reference to go to, um, for the ordinance.
Which is the next thing on the agenda, and they did a term, and I'll let Kimberly make that presentation, cause. She worked extremely hard on it. So this way, someone, um, after we vote on it. Um, but, um, the, this way, s- it makes it a lot less. It makes it more difficult for someone to try and squeeze an intent into a TPU, um, title. That's not there, that there is a corresponding definition to every single item line of the TPU. Um, and so, and we can, if we need to tweak it, we can either, we can tweak the line or the definition, um, accordingly, so.
Yes, so, um, that is, um, the extent of what we have, um, for tonight. So if you have any further questions for this, um, please let me know.
I mean, honestly, a few little things in the TPU, but I don't want us to get bogged down tonight. And there might, you know, it's just. And there may be good answers to ninety-nine percent of them, I just.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the goal is to get to ninety percent and. Realize we're going to have to amend and adopt and. Make change, we'll probably have things come up that we see that we, uh, are conditional that we may just add in. Eventually as well, so. Very good. Um, any further questions from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Um, is this, is this, is, is all or none? Just, just to approve the first reading.
Make a motion to approve the first reading.
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed, motion carries. Item number two, consideration to approve the first reading to amend Article Two, definitions of the Effingham County Code of Ordinance. All right, now you up.
Thank you. So due to the significant increase.
State your name.
Again, I'm sorry. Community planner, Kimberly Barlett. Due to the significant increase in the number of uses on the table of permitted uses, um. We added to the definitions, uh, there's approximately about ninety-three definitions currently. Um, with the proposed update, this expanded to over five hundred and sixty, enhancing clarity and usability. The update aims to improve the readability and understanding of the table of permitted uses for all users.
Abattoir, I've never heard that word in my life, but now I know what it is.
We have one.
Yes, we do.
Case you don't, that's facility where animals are humanely slaughtered.
You didn't grow up in Guyton, Georgia.
I've never heard anybody in Guyton say abattoir either. Unless they were French and I haven't ran into many French people in, in Guyton. Very good.
I always wrote, no one is that.
Very good. Any further questions, guys? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor? Unopposed, motion carries. Thank you, Kim. Thank you for your work on this, all of y'all.
A lot of work in these things.
You don't have it down, it's a problem.
Moving on to item number three, uh, consideration to approve resolution number zero-two-five dash zero-one-five. To amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget.
Good afternoon, Mark Barnes, Finance Director. Uh, this amendment has two items in it. It allocates funding for the CRC mini grant that we received this year and for motor roller radio equipment that was ordered for E C S O sheriff's office vehicles. Staff recommends alternative number one to approve the budget amendment.
Any questions from the board? Make a motion to approve alternative one. All in favor? Unopposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Item number four, consideration to approve the purchase and sale contract for the acquisition of thirteen point three-two acres of real property. Parcel ID zero-three-two-nine-zero-zero-three-three from Ambi Development Incorporated. For the purpose of Old River Road right-of-way acquisition.
Good afternoon, Danielle Carver, Procurement and Contracts Manager. So Effingham County has secured a purchase and sale contract for thirteen point three-two acres parcel. Along Old River Road. As part of our ongoing right-of-way acquisition efforts to support future roadway and infrastructure improvements. So the property owner, Ambi Development Incorporated, initially considered subdividing the parcel. But ultimately agreed to sell the entire tract to the county for fifteen thousand. With the county covering all associated closing costs. The agreement has been signed by the seller and no additional survey or platting is required. The closing will be managed by the Newberry Law Firm pending board approval, so staff recommends alternative one.
Thank you. Any questions?
This is the straight and out Old River Road coming to eighty, correct?
Eventually, yes. So this is actually on the corner of Old River Road and eighty, so this helps us with right-of-way on both roads.
And that's, if you're looking at the gas station, is the island dividing is to the right?
If you're facing eighty, it's to the right.
Perfect. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed, motion carries. Um, I'm going to take the opportunity right now to take a break before our six P M planning. And we'll pick up on item number five when we return.
Okay. Good afternoon, Danielle Carver, Procurement and Contracts Manager. So Effingham County has secured a purchase and sale contract for thirteen point three-two acres parcel along Old River Road. As part of our ongoing right-of-way acquisition efforts to support future roadway and infrastructure improvements. So the property owner, Ambi Development Incorporated, initially considered subdividing the parcel, but ultimately agreed to sell the entire tract to the county for fifteen thousand, with the county covering all associated closing costs. The agreement has been signed by the seller and no additional survey or platting is required. The closing will be managed by the Newberry Law Firm pending board approval, so staff recommends alternative one.
Thank you. Any questions?
This is the straight and out Old River Road coming to eighty, correct?
Eventually, yes. So this is actually on the corner of Old River Road and eighty, so this helps us with right-of-way on both roads.
And that's, if you're looking out the gas station, is the island dividing is to the right?
If you're facing eighty, it's to the right.
Gotcha. Perfect. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Unopposed, motion carries. Um, I'm gonna take the opportunity right now to take a break before our six P M. planning, and we'll pick up on item number five when we return.
Yeah.
But we hurried.
Alrighty, I'm gonna call us back to order for our planning board. Time is now six-oh-four P M. Item number one is a public hearing, consideration to approve an application by Christopher Lewis for a conditional use located at one-five-three-six Blue Jay Road to allow for a rural business. Map number four-one-five, parcel number one-two in the fourth district.
Kimberly Barlett, Community Planner. So the applicant requests a conditional use for a rural business to have an office for two employees on the property. This building will be separate from the principal dwelling. The parcel is zoned AR-one and meets all the requirements set for, set forth in the Effingham County Code of Ordinance, section three-point-one-five B rural business. One of the specific uses called out as a, is as permitted as a rural business in the Code of Ordinance is offices. The future land use map does not have this parcel projected to remain agricultural residential. Staff has reviewed the application and the application is complete with the following conditions. The applicant shall obtain and keep in good standing an Effingham County business license.
Thank you. The applicant here? Come on up. Please state your name for the record.
Christopher Lewis.
Thanks, sir. Any questions, guys, for him?
I'd like to know your business.
So I own, uh, a few rental properties around the county, and that's where my two girls, they'll, that's where they'll receive phone calls and, and handle the books and often at a location. No one come, no, none of the tenants come back and forth there. It's just strictly where they're, they're gonna have an office, so.
Gotcha. So it'll just be calls, nobody's coming to visit or anything like that?
That's correct. I mean, we, you know, I have some other employees that'll be in and out from time to time, you know, but materials to go fix stuff and stuff like that. But as far as offices that will be in, or people in the offices, there'll only be two, two girls, so.
And it's an existing structure.
It is. It's next to my residence.
And like you said, there's not gonna be any kind of work done there to fix things or anything. It's just strictly a s, office.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I do have one question. What, what spurred you to wanna do this, do where you, somebody report you for, for business use? Or what made you wanna do the, the rural business? You're just making phone calls.
Say it again now.
What spurred you to wanna, to do this in the first place?
So, so when we, when we order, uh, mobile homes for some of the mobile, mobile home parts, we have to have a dealer's license to get them at dealer cost. It's not a dealership, but, um, anyways, in order to do that, we had to have a business license from that residence, so we had to come see Steve and Chelsea and.
I got you.
That's what got the ball going on.
Like a car dealership, you had to have a loc, location.
Yeah, you had to have a, a physical office location.
Correct.
Got you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone here opposed to this? Please come forward.
Good evening.
Do you, state your name for the record, please?
Jeffrey Pollak. Um, my main concern is, uh, at this moment, uh, there's a lot of noise coming from this property. I, I'm right behind this guy. Um, I don't know him. It, it just, but there's a, a lot of vehicle noise from nine, ten, eleven o'clock sometimes, and there's a light shining over into my property. I don't know what it, what it is, and I thought there was a business there already. Um, and then I, I, first time I've seen this. That, that's my main concern, is it's loud.
Just so we're clear, which property is yours?
One-oh-five Middle Lands Drive.
Okay, got it. So you're right, dead center.
Dead center directly back.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Lewis, do you have any feedback on this at all, or?
I have a light in the yard.
Okay.
I don't know what light, light we're talking about, but.
Gotcha.
That light in the street light in the yard. Um, I, I don't know about any noise. When you say ten to eleven, you mean ten to eleven during the middle of the day?
No. It's usually at night between nine, ten, or eleven o'clock. It sounds like somebody's running a diesel engine there.
I don't have.
There's, there was a bunch of equipment that had been parked there at one time. I don't know.
We do have two excavators to do like certain things, rink builds. We have that, no one that out there at five o'clock hours are driven from seven to five, so if any noise should be coming up there at seven o'clock in the morning, or maybe five, five-thirty.
Do you, do you mind coming back up, please? Thank you. Would you be opposed to, you know, just to, um, ensure this with some business hours to be included?
Feel free. If it's eleven o'clock, you come in that yard by night. Don't know anything, so if they're out there eleven o'clock, they're.
But what are your hours of operation? How about that?
Seven to five.
Seven to five.
It's regulated in the ordinance, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's covered in the ordinance, so.
Very good.
And as far as the light, I don't know anything. I don't even have a light in my yard zone.
Yeah.
I don't know where that's coming from.
Would you be, just as good neighbors, be willing to?
Oh, yeah.
We have landscape lights up in, in the yard.
Just something we've observed in the past, you know, I, I don't know what that is.
Now, there is a train that passes every night, about ten, ten, ten-thirty through the rink, and you can hear it from the house there.
Yes, I'm used to trains.
Very good.
My concern.
I, I would say by, by getting this, there, there's, he's gonna have to follow more rules than if he just had AR-one property. He could, if it's just AR-one property, I guess he could crack, crack a tractor up at night, right? If you wanted to, but this would regulate that, I guess what I'm trying to say.
I guess he would fall into the noise ordinance, and I think he'd like a ten.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, this is actually gonna be more restrictive on him if we do approve it for this type of use, um, as well. Plus, he'll have to abide by the business hours and all that, and if not, you contact us and code enforcement will come investigate. Very good. And if, um, you know, you guys are neighbors, if you talk and figure out where the light comes from, and.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna work with you on that.
I'm sure they'll help you investigate that one, so.
We'll find out where the light's coming from.
Very good.
No, I have feelings.
Appreciate it, bud.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. Any, anything else?
Don't hesitate. If for whatever reason you have an issue, that's what we're here for. So contact them and we'll see what's going on.
Right.
Very good.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is, uh, anyone else here opposed? If not, I'm gonna close this public hearing and, uh, move it to the board. Any questions, guys? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Unopposed, motion carries.
Is the approval with any stipulations, Commissioner?
Um, no, I think they sort of worked it out, as long as he adheres to the business hours.
Yeah, I think we determined that the hours of operation is covered in the ordinance.
Seven to five.
There were no other stipulations stated by staff. Just to obtain the business license, which should be on the staff report.
Which I guess is why he's doing it, so.
Very good. Moving on to item number two, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Christopher Lewis for a conditional use located at one-five-three-six Blue Jay Road to allow for a rural business. Map number four-one-five, parcel number one-two, in the fourth district. Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve, uh, with the earlier, uh, business hours and business license requirement.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Unopposed, motion carries.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if you can go back to number one, um, there wasn't a vote on that one. I apologize. I interrupted you guys.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're right, so let's back up. We'll start over again. I thought we did vote.
I thought we did vote, too.
There was a, a motion and a second, but you didn't vote.
I, I, I'm pretty sure all in-favored it.
I said I.
We can vote again.
Myself and attorney.
We can vote again, just to, just to make sure the record's clear.
Sure we did. And Jamie seconded it, because I've got it on mine.
Okay.
I understand there was a motion. I'm just talking about the vote at the end.
Very good. Uh, just to cover our bases, um, I guess that would annul item number two, though. We should have to do both again. Is that correct?
You do not.
That would be a no vote. We couldn't have been able to take action anyway, I guess.
Okay. Uh, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve, um, the application with the stipulation, of course, that he adcribes by the business hours of seven to five and obtains a business license.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
If we had a stipulation, we can't do a second reading, you know?
It's not.
It's a stipulation, not a condition.
It was already there.
Yeah, they're, they're already in the ordinance.
So do we need to do the second reading again, or no?
You do not.
Perfect. Alright, moving on to item number three. It's a public hearing. Consideration to approve an application by Ralph Ron for a variance from section three dot two-one dot one to allow for the occupation of an RV camper located at one-three-two-one Shawnee Egypt Road, zoned AR-one, map number two-four-seven-A, parcel number three, in the third district. Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve, uh, with the earlier, uh, business hours and business license requirement.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Unopposed, motion carries.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if you can go back to number one, um, there wasn't a vote on that one. I apologize. I interrupted you guys.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're right, so let's back up. We'll start over again. I thought we did vote.
I thought we did vote, too.
There was a, a motion and a second, but you didn't vote.
I, I, I'm pretty sure all in-favored it.
I said I.
We can vote again.
Myself and attorney.
We can vote again, just to, just to make sure the record's clear.
Sure we did. And Jamie seconded it, because I've got it on mine.
Okay.
I understand there was a motion. I'm just talking about the vote at the end.
Very good. Uh, just to cover our bases, um, I guess that would annul item number two, though. We should have to do both again. Is that correct?
You do not.
That would be a no vote. We couldn't have been able to take action anyway, I guess.
Okay. Uh, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve, um, the application with the stipulation, of course, that he adcribes by the business hours of seven to five and obtains a business license.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
If we had a stipulation, we can't do a second reading, you know?
It's not.
It's a stipulation, not a condition.
It was already there.
Yeah, they're, they're already in the ordinance.
So do we need to do the second reading again, or no?
You do not.
Perfect. Alright, moving on to item number three. It's a public hearing. Consideration to approve an application by Ralph Ron for a variance from section three dot two-one dot one to allow for the occupation of an RV camper located at one-three-two-one Shawnee Egypt Road, zoned AR-one, map number two-four-seven-A, parcel number three, in the third district.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Unopposed, motion carries. Moving back to new business. Item number five. Consideration to approve a contract award to Reeves Construction Company for the T-SLOSS-funded resurfacing of roadways in District Three as part of the twenty-twenty-five maintenance resurfacing program.
Hey, Danielle Carver, Procurement and Contracts Manager. So there is a correction to the original contract documents and, um, staff report that were included in the board packet. The initial documents listed the scope as twenty-point-one miles across nine locations. However, the updated and final contract reflects eighteen-point-five miles across eight locations. This revision's due to the removal of Stillwell-Clyde Road, which will be bid separately under a future project. Um, also, the corrected mileage and project list are reflected in the revised, um, contract and attachments, which I believe were added to your packets. Um, Effingham County issued ITB number twenty-five, ITB zero-eight-seven for resurfacing work in District Three as part of the twenty-twenty-five T-SLOSS maintenance resurfacing program. Reeves Construction Company submitted the lowest responsible and, responsive and responsible bid. Thomas and Hunter will serve as the county's engineering consultant on this project, so staff recommends alternative one.
Thank you, Danielle. Any questions from the board? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Unopposed, motion carries. Moving back to new business. Item number five. Consideration to approve a contract award to Reeves Construction Company for the T-SLOSS-funded resurfacing of roadways in District Three as part of the twenty-twenty-five maintenance resurfacing program.
Hey, Danielle Carver, Procurement and Contracts Manager. So there is a correction to the original contract documents and, um, staff report that were included in the board packet. The initial documents listed the scope as twenty-point-one miles across nine locations. However, the updated and final contract reflects eighteen-point-five miles across eight locations. This revision's due to the removal of Stillwell-Clyde Road, which will be bid separately under a future project. Um, also, the corrected mileage and project list are reflected in the revised, um, contract and attachments, which I believe were added to your packets. Um, Effingham County issued ITB number twenty-five, ITB zero-eight-seven for resurfacing work in District Three as part of the twenty-twenty-five T-SLOSS maintenance resurfacing program. Reeves Construction Company submitted the lowest responsible and, responsive and responsible bid. Thomas and Hunter will serve as the county's engineering consultant on this project, so staff recommends alternative one.
Thank you, Danielle. Any questions from the board? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Unopposed, motion carries. Moving back to new business. Item number five. Consideration to approve a contract award to Reeves Construction Company for the T-SLOSS-funded resurfacing of roadways in District Three as part of the twenty-twenty-five maintenance resurfacing program.
Hey, Danielle Carver, Procurement and Contracts Manager. So there is a correction to the original contract documents and, um, staff report that were included in the board packet. The initial documents listed the scope as twenty-point-one miles across nine locations. However, the updated and final contract reflects eighteen-point-five miles across eight locations. This revision's due to the removal of Stillwell-Clyde Road, which will be bid separately under a future project. Um, also, the corrected mileage and project list are reflected in the revised, um, contract and attachments, which I believe were added to your packets. Um, Effingham County issued ITB number twenty-five, ITB zero-eight-seven for resurfacing work in District Three as part of the twenty-twenty-five T-SLOSS maintenance resurfacing program. Reeves Construction Company submitted the lowest responsible and, responsive and responsible bid. Thomas and Hunter will serve as the county's engineering consultant on this project, so staff recommends alternative one.
Thank you, Danielle. Any questions from the board? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Unopposed, motion carries. Moving back to new business. Item number five. Consideration to approve a contract award to Reeves Construction Company for the T-SLOSS-funded resurfacing of roadways in District Three as part of the twenty-twenty-five maintenance resurfacing program.
Hey, Danielle Carver, Procurement and Contracts Manager. So there is a correction to the original contract documents and, um, staff report that were included in the board packet. The initial documents listed the scope as twenty-point-one miles across nine locations. However, the updated and final contract reflects eighteen-point-five miles across eight locations. This revision's due to the removal of Stillwell-Clyde Road, which will be bid separately under a future project. Um, also, the corrected mileage and project list are reflected in the revised, um, contract and attachments, which I believe were added to your packets. Um, Effingham County issued ITB number twenty-five, ITB zero-eight-seven for resurfacing work in District Three as part of the twenty-twenty-five T-SLOSS maintenance resurfacing program. Reeves Construction Company submitted the lowest responsible and, responsive and responsible bid. Thomas and Hunter will serve as the county's engineering consultant on this project, so staff recommends alternative one.
Thank you, Danielle. Any questions from the board? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number six, consideration to approve the cost-sharing agreement with GTIS Acquisitions LLC and to authorize procurement for the construction of the old Augusta Industrial Driveway, including access improvements through a planned roundabout at Old Augusta Road South and Logistics Parkway.
This item was, um, is for approval of a cost-sharing agreement with GTIS Acquisitions LLC related to access improvements on Old Augusta Road South to support a planned industrial development. The county is planning to construct a new driveway and fourth leg of a roundabout at Old Augusta Road South and Logistics Parkway. This single access point will replace five existing driveway connections, helping reduce traffic conflict points and improve safety. In exchange, the developer has agreed to contribute three-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand towards construction and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred. and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred towards design cost, their proportionate share, share of the improvement. So, the county will manage the construction and the improvements will include grading, curb, and gutter, sidewalk, storm drainage, lighting, and paving, all per GDOT standards. The full construction estimate prepared by Kim Lee Horn totals three hundred and eighty-one thousand. The agreement also outlines the developer's obligation to dedicate right-of-way and establishes timelines to ensure the access point is completed in time for their project's opening, so staff recommends alternative one.
Thank you, Danielle. No questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number seven, consideration to approve the submission of the twenty twenty-five LMEG supplemental application grant number LMIG dash twenty twenty-five dash two seven eight two seven dash SUP to the Georgia Department of Transportation.
We're bringing forward a request for board approval to submit the county's twenty twenty-five LMEG supplemental application to GDOT. This application seeks full funding with no local match required for the reclamation and resurfacing of McCall Road North from Ralph Ron Road to milepost five point four. The total project length is one point nine miles. The project includes cement stabilized base reclamation, two-foot shoulder widening, and new asphalt surfacing, essentially a full rebuild. The application packet includes the cover letter, signed application pages, and all required documentation. Everything is prepared and ready for submission upon board.
And just for public, which way is five point four mile marker, is that twenty-one or towards?
Twenty-one. So, it's Ralph Ron to twenty-one. No, actually, I'm sorry, it's not to twenty-one because, um, uh, because some of that is going to get, um, uh, torn up because we're adding the new lanes.
Correct.
So, it's, uh, it's just south of the area where the roundabout is going by the gas station.
Gotcha, so it's.
So, this way we don't pay to put it in and then rip it up.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions from the board? Not all entertain a motion.
I believe that we agree the submission of this LMEG supplemental application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number eight, consideration to approve task order number ten with EOM operations for the construction of Westwood Heights Drainage Improvements.
This item is appro, um, is for approval of task order ten with EOM operations for drainage improvements in the Westwood Heights subdivision. We orig, originally solicited competitive bids for this project, but only received one bid, and the pricing came in significantly higher than anticipated, so given the lack of competitive responses and inflated costs, staff explored alternative procurement options that would remain in compliance with county policy. Through our existing master service agreement, we worked with EOM operations to structure a task order that allows the project to move forward at a substantially reduced cost. EOM will serve as the prime contractor with Savannah River Utilities as their subcontractor, and the county will maintain oversight through EOM's agreement. So, this approach enables us to deliver the full project scope, including grading, stormwater, infrastructure, and drainage improvements, while achieving meaningful cost savings compared to the initial bid, so staff recommends alternative one.
Okay, that's roughly about what, eight hundred thousand saved?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I'd just like to comment, I know it's an expensive fix, but it's a long time coming, so thank everybody for, for voting for this and, uh, it's probably the first neighborhood that I know that gets flooding when we get any type of significant rainfall whatsoever. So, uh, this is gonna be great for that, that neighborhood, thank you.
We've been dealing with that since I got elected in two thousand and twelve.
Yeah, we got it done, though.
Almost. I'll entertain a motion. Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number nine. Consideration to approve the contract award to Metal Crafts for the re-roofing of designated roof areas at Central High School, utilizing state contract pricing through the O M N N I Cooperative Purchasing Agreement, contract number zero four dash two nine.
This item is for approval of the contract award to address deteriorating roof conditions at Central High School. Metal Crafts at Tech to America Company conducted an onsite evaluation and submitted a proposal to fully replace the roofing system over six designated roof areas. The scope includes full tear-off installation of new R twenty-five installation with tapered areas for drainage, a new PVC membrane system, and all necessary flashings, gutters, and downspouts. The project also comes with a two-year workmanship warranty and a twenty-five-year manufacturer's warranty. Um, we're using state contract pricing through Omni Cooperative Contract to ensure compliance and cost efficiency. The attached proposal and purchase order reflect the complete scope and terms, so staff recommends alternative one.
And just for the record on this, the, um, uh, about eighty percent of the roofing, uh, over at the school uh, is covered under a warranty that was transferred to us from the school district. Um, these are just the areas that are not covered under that warranty. Um, so this would, um, uh, this would essentially, uh, uh, put the entire roof, uh, system under warranty.
Thank you, Tim. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Item number ten, consideration to approve a bike pedestrian plan as a policy document for comprehensive planning of transportation needs. I understand Jonathan's not here to see if somebody's speaking.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just bring it up really quickly, um, we actually, uh, posted this online and will continue to post it online. Uh, this is the finished product, it was kind of a second phase that we had, um, to our Safe Streets for All, uh, plan. Uh, and what we're utilizing here is creating a network and standards for where we would place, um, future pedestrian improvements. A lot of it's related to neighborhoods and schools, uh, and general connectivity, um, uh, across different areas of the county. Uh, so I'll give you an example, um, uh, you, you know, on, on Goshen Road, um, it would allow, you know, it, so when we're widening that, we're making sure, um, that, uh, we include enough area uh, to do a, um, separated bike and pedestrian path on one side, and then we might do strategic areas, um, where crossovers would, would be, uh, and neighborhoods would be on, on the other side, uh, of just a simple sidewalk, so it gives us a plan to operate from, so when we do an upgrade to a road, um, we can actually show, um, that, uh, you know, uh, what, what the pedestrian and bicycle improvements were meant to be on it.
Very good, thank you, Tim. No questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number twelve, reports from commissioners and administrative staff, uh, Madam Clerk, I'll start with you, if you have anything. Tim?
I do, um, I just wanna mention, um, last week, we had a very nice grand opening of, uh, the Sand Hill Playground. Uh, and just to keep the momentum going, um, we are preparing dates and we'll be reaching out when availability is for a ground, for a ribbon cutting for the Meldrum Playground, um, that was, uh, completed this week. Um, and then we are waiting, uh, just until we get all the IT upgrades, uh, and, um, to do, um, ribbon cuttings, because I really want the public to be able to see on the, um, uh, on the new emergency operations center, uh, it's absolutely beautiful inside. Uh, then they can also see, um, the, uh, multipurpose rooms that they, that they can use for public events as well. Um, this building, we are waiting for everybody to move in next door, um, uh, so that, uh, so that we can, uh, celebrate this. Uh, and then, um, uh, and then we, we still have to, we're, we're just fixing some minor items remaining in the EMS training facility, um, on that one as well, so, um, we're making progress and we're moving on to, and, and in a month, the Ebenezer Fire Station will be complete, so, um, we're, uh, we're getting a, a, a bunch of stuff completed, so. Uh, but we wanna be able to celebrate it so that the public can know that these, uh, these new facilities are here for them. Uh, so we will keep you up to date on dates, uh, for the events surrounding those. Oh, and just as a little bit of heads up, um, and, uh, the McCall Park, um, the lights for the field, uh, the, the installation started today, um, so that will, uh, um, that, that gets an enormous amount of usage. Now, it just will be twenty-four seven, so, um, not really, but.
Any updates on?
Honestly, I see people on that playground when I come, like, when I drive home tonight, it's dark, there will be people on the playground with a flashlight, um, that's how much use it gets, so, um.
Let's get the rest done.
They probably do need to cut off, though, about twelve o'clock.
Oh, we do, it's just for the, uh, it's just for the, when the, when the fields are used at night.
Okay, yeah, it probably doesn't need to be on twenty-four seven.
Any, um, updates on Baker, any, everything wants to move there as far as we know?
Let's try here. Oh, okay, so, um, Baker, um, uh, we have not gotten any hangups, um, from, uh, from them, um, and so, um, I'm trying to remember what the scheduled completion date. Seth, do you know the scheduled completion date?
I don't know the scheduled, uh, completion date, but I mean.
Thank you, Seth. I appreciate it.
I thought it was called Seth Park.
More concrete, and they started out.
They're gonna be ahead of schedule, um, weather's been favorable, um, and they haven't run into any problems, but I have to find out what, I just don't remember off the top of my head what the completion date was on it. I think, I think it was, um, uh, in October, but I may be wrong.
Perfect, thank you.
And, uh, we should be getting contracts out, um, and not the next meeting, but the second meeting in June for, uh, the Clyo, Meldrum, the rest of the park, uh, beyond the playground.
But the one on Fair Road.
Uh, one nineteen, uh, and, um, uh, and Ponor, so.
Thank you, Tim, good to see that, Sploß money getting spent. Anything else from staff? Got anything? Good. Good, thank you. Commissioners, I'll start myself, um, Tim, could you update public on our timeline for the McCall stoplight? I've gotten a few calls about that.
Yeah, so, um, originally when we issued the contract on that, um, we had a, uh, we had an April completion date. Um, then we got word from Georgia Power, um, that there was an extended lead time on their power poles. Um, and so we went back to the board and extended the construction date to, um, to July. Uh, we expect to meet that, the delay right now is we're just waiting for, everything is ready to go up once, uh, Georgia Power puts the poles up, and essentially what they're doing is they're putting higher poles up so that we can put the traffic light in below them. Um, and, um, they're, they're onsite, they're partially assembled, um, we're just waiting for them to do it. They know what our schedule is and, um, and so hopefully, as soon as they get them up, we can, uh, uh, we can immediately put the traffic signal up. But July is the latest that, that will be completed.
Okay, that's programming, everything?
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. Thank you. That's all I have. Um, so, you, Forrest?
I'm good.
Commissioner Burdette?
Uh, just a couple things, the update on the, uh, stop work order on Goshen where the daycare is. I know they started work again today.
Yeah, they, um, they were.
Mike? Please come up and state your name, sir, thank you.
Steve Canada, Director of Development Services, uh, I saw that Jonathan approved their landscape plan for, and that also included a fence as well. And, uh, they asked today where they're gonna put their, um, erosion control, still fencing now, they're gonna have to move it back again. Uh, and I know that, um, um, there's been conversations with Jonathan, I think I'll just, um, shoot you the email in the morning, how about that? And then you can see what the.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I'd like to receive a copy of that as well.
I'm sorry, yes, ma'am, I'll send it to everybody.
Send it to everybody.
Send it to everybody. And I, and I hope that you'll definitely be, um, watching them closely.
Yes, daily. And then also, um, the other one that, um, on all Augusta, yeah.
And I've, I got updates on the other two from Tim today, but, uh, just a couple of questions slash suggestions. As notice, we do a lot of the RV approvals, is that something we can handle on a staff level, you think? Because it's pretty much a slam dunk, you know, if you're building a house, you just wanna stay in an RV for a year or less, why do we need to?
And, and I, I think we can on that, I don't think it's a, since it's not a, a zoning, I, it's one of those things that I think we can do that if, that we can approve for up to a certain period of time.
Yeah, we just have some.
And then it has to go to the board for extension.
True.
And that's something we can, we can look at.
That's something you'd wanna do anyway, unless it's.
Probably just in the AR districts, because it could get hairy if somebody weren't in a, on a smaller.
Yeah, maybe.
You know what I mean?
Right.
Just an idea.
Just where it makes sense, you know, I don't, I wouldn't have to, wouldn't see them coming to the board for that every time. And the other thing was just, uh, going over the EOM report today, um, didn't know if it was worthwhile to maybe have ten minutes a month, you know, at our, um, early session to go over some of the EOM reports, like, today I was looking at it and, like, the lift station runtimes were just really spiked up just for Staffordshire. Maybe that, is that because of the flooding and?
Yes.
I figured that, but, to kinda run through, you know, what we're doing in the county, just, just a suggestion.
Okay.
It'd be nice, but another thing was.
And I, and I think on that, what I, what I might do, if anytime that EOM, uh, does make a presentation there, I'll just, because you know how many pages they're reporting.
Yeah, we don't want to go, go crazy with.
I'll just send an email, reminder email out to all of you saying, hey, they're gonna speak on Tuesday, if there's specific things you want them to concentrate on, let me know.
Yeah, and another thing was like, you know, we're in, in negative on the, the budget on some things and not, and well on others, but, you know, just the lies behind some of that, and if we get asked about it, we know, but that's it, there, I think. It's really happy we're doing a few things in D two, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Burdette, Commissioner Deluge?
Got a few things, um, we mentioned Sploßed earlier, I know I've brought this up before. Um, I know each district has some money allocated for roads, and I know, I guess, next year, we're gonna have to vote for it, so I know we're getting close to the end of this Sploßed. So, do we have any kind of timeline where we may, I guess, tap into that, this allocated or?
Our, our thought is, and the concern was, cost overruns on the, um, uh, in the per district basis on, on Sploßed. Um, but I think we might be in pretty good shape there, because there is some money in T-Sploß that we can go to as well. Um, so, um, we are doing one more road list for July. Um, and we normally do it that, uh, because that is, um, in the beginning of July is when we get our twenty twenty-six T-Sploßed allocation. So, the thought is to take the T-Sploßed money, take the Sploßed money, and we have a few, um, uh, we, uh, a couple of, uh, roads left in the, in the T-Sploß repaving list, uh, and put that all in one place, so, um, I think, well, we'll, I'll send an email out, um, to you all, um, these are roads that are not on, anywhere on the T-Sploßed list. Um, roads that you think, you know, just barely, if you recall, we had to cut stuff, stuff off to meet budget on T-Sploßed. If, uh, if there are roads that you wanna do on that, let me know, that, um, that got, didn't make the cut, or if there are additional roads that have just, you know, more recently been put on your radar, uh, just let me know.
Well, and that, and that's why I'm, I'm asking, I've got one road that after the last snowstorm, it has deteriorated very badly.
Is green, is that?
Green, Green Morgan School Road, now, we've got, uh, EOM's been great, uh, we've got the in-house crew out there doing what they can, which will still help with the base, but.
Right.
It, it definitely won't be like, you know, a McLendon coming in, they just don't have the equipment, so.
Right.
That's why I ask, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you for that, um, the other thing I wanted to bring up, and I'm sure we've got this, um, in mind, but just, whenever we do make the repairs and, and go through the process with, with Central, um, let's make sure we promote that with PR, just because I look on ACCG, they send out the local lens, I think on a weekly basis, and I just recently saw where some, uh, a county renovated so, a historical building, thought it was a great store, and it made me think about Central, so.
Yeah, and I think even. Yeah, and I think even, if I can pick one project, it'll probably, we'll do a couple of them. We might do when we do the ribbon cutting of either this building or the Emergency Operations Center and submit it to them. I saw that same email and I thought of the same thing. We just haven't had a lot of building projects. So I think this building might be a good one to highlight. And then, of course, I mean, it's, I want to, the amount of media that we're going to have with regards to Central because it's such a unique project, you know, absolutely, we're going to, matter of fact, they're doing a story on it on the local news. I think they did it either late last week with the alumni there. So as it keeps going on, you're going to, you're going to get a lot of updates on this in the media.
Okay, thank you. The last thing I have is, I can't remember if I brought this up last meeting, but Brant Herndon, who is the Effingham County CEO of our Industrial Development Authority, and Susan Kraut, who is the Chamber of Commerce, I guess CEO was her title, they have both been selected to be in this year's Georgia Trend addition for being part of the five hundred most influential people in Georgia. And what I've noticed is in the past, cities and counties, when they have someone within their entity that are chosen for that, they'll put some kind of congratulations ad or something recognizing them. And I thought, hey, since we've got two people from our county, you know, I thought it would be good if the Board of Commissioners, you know, showed support with them, put some kind of ad, you know, in Georgia Trend. And I've talked with Stephanie about it, and I'm not sure if we have to take action item on that at some point separate, or if we, if it's within our purview already, okay.
And we've got, and, and I can do it as part of the advertising budget that we have under County Manager. We rarely use those funds, but it's for things just specifically like this that, that we can, we can put the order in.
Maybe we split it with the ADA.
And the chamber.
So that's, so that's all I've got. I just wanted to bring that up. I just thought we needed to probably show, be good, a good show to show support since we have two people in our community that's been chosen.
Commissioner Hill, before I go to you, I forgot something on my list. What's the status of the air conditioning at the Port House?
Yes, and so we've been struggling with the air conditioning unit over at the, at the judicial complex, the new building, the, the big building. And so it's the original one that was in there when we built the building. It, and so it completely has to be replaced. It is a, it's actually a Freon-based unit. And so maintaining it is not an option. And so we anticipate, I mean, with absolute, we just didn't have the bid ready tonight. But we may have to do an emergency procurement on that and then have it ratified here. But it's going to be very pricey. It's going to be about one point two million dollars. It will be on state contract. And they're working through the components right now to move that forward. We want to get it done as quickly as we can so that we can just do our best to keep what compressors we have working operational during the summer. And so the, the hope is that we won't have to close anything, close anything down. But it, that very well may be the case, where we may have to relocate certain court cases to here or reschedule if the, if the complete system fails. But we're working on it right now.
Will that go out for bid, or do we have a contract?
It's state contract. So we, you know, we're, we're able to, to purchase that at the pre-negotiated state rates.
Is, were they able to get any relief today? I mean, were there any repairs?
Yes, and so they got the, the first and third floor units operational. And they, tomorrow morning, like five AM, they're going to go in there. They have to bleed the system on the second floor unit. And so their hopes is that it'll be cooled by nine AM by, by, by the time everyone gets in there.
Thank you. So I don't have any calls at seven thirty from every court?
Yeah.
Mine is, the only one that called me is Pro Bay. Thank you. Commissioner Hillman?
Yes, I just thought of this as Commissioner Deluge was talking about the transportation and the roads and so forth. Is there any, and I'm, I don't understand how a lot of this works, obviously, but you talked about that extra sploes money. Are we considering maybe buying some, some, some maybe better equipment to do some of these roads? I get a lot of, thank you for working on this road with the chip and seal, but it just doesn't last that long. And, and so, you know, they end up going back out again. And EOM's good about going back. Jonathan's been very good about working, you know, trying to do. But I wonder if we're just not keeping throwing, you know, good money after bad because it's just, whatever. Is, is there a way that we can look at this as a, as a project to say we can maybe use some of these funds to, to buy some better equipment, more up to date that would, that would last longer? Maybe a higher grade? And I know that's probably a lot of money, but I wonder just, rock's expensive. I wanted to buy some rock. And rock alone is a huge expense. And so if, if, I don't know what the cost differential would be, but I just feel like that.
And, and I do.
We're sort of, if we go out there and dump all this rock and then in another six months you're dumping more rock, you know, what are we accomplishing? So it might be worth just putting some more money into.
Well, like I said, there's probably two ways to fix it. One of them is that we did have, I mean, when, when the board originally started the chip seal program, and that was prior to me, I, I think it was like twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, something like that. Yeah, right after that big snowstorm. They, they started it with used equipment. And that lasted so long. And so over the last two years, we, I think we replaced every single piece of equipment from the, from the roller, the vibratory roller, to the rock box, to everything that we, we've done. What we can potentially do, you know, obviously what we want to do is anytime we get a chip seal road is eventually, if we're keep re-chip sealing it, we're building up a base like we did on Green, was it Green Cemetery?
Green Morgan School.
Green Morgan Road. Like we did on Green Morgan Road, so then we can put asphalt on top of it eventually. And so an option, I think, maybe rather than equipment, because I don't think you're going to get that much of an improvement on, on equipment, might be rather than doing two chip seal layers, doing three chip seal layers per pass. And over time, we're catching up on our chip seal roads. And so we're going to be able to be working on fewer and fewer of them on an annual basis till we kind of eliminate them. So doing a, a three chip seal pass might be a solution that might get, end up having much higher quality results than, than what we have right now. But that's something I could talk to, I could talk to EOM about.
Let's just look at it because I just feel like we're just repeating ourselves. Like I say, if you do three layers instead of two, maybe that will resolve that until we can ultimately maybe put some asphalt on it or something.
Yes, ma'am.
The other is, is just a big thank you. As most of you know, I was sitting in Memorial Hospital Monday for twenty-seven hours in the emergency room, which is an experience that I hope none of you ever have to go through. But I do appreciate all of you who stepped up and, and still ran the town hall in my absence. It was very much appreciated by me and, and I didn't have any doubt how good it would be. And I've heard good things about it. So, but it wouldn't have happened with you people who are sitting here that devoted some time. And of course, Commissioner Chairman Ron, who took over too. So Tim heard you as well. So I do appreciate y'all all being there and, in my absence. And we're doing good, so.
You got a, you got a, our largest turnout of a town hall yet.
I was going to say, you know, we need to, you know, recognize our communications team as well because even our turnout at Forrest's opening, I mean, we've seen a significant uptick in participation and engagement since we've instituted that. So I think it's money well spent. It's getting out there.
And that's good. And I certainly appreciate it. It made me feel good.
I'm still not, totally not sold on the superhero thing, though.
Me either.
Very good. Is that all? Commissioner?
That's all with me. Yes, thank you.
Mr. Kiefer?
Just a couple of quick things. And I don't know if you can answer this. I don't know who was, if Trey was handling it. Just a update on the Abercorn Dock. It's probably just still in permitting.
Yeah, so we, they, they are doing a design based solely on the property that we own. And they know to proceed with the, with the permitting on the, on the dock portion of it first, right? Because even though it's a little semicircle, there's still a lot of room there. So we can actually get a good amount of organized parking and so on and so forth. So right now they're working on the permit for two docks. A, one of them, one of them on the south side will be a fishing dock. And then the, on the north side would be a, a kind of a little boat launch, paddleboat launch. Yeah, and they managed to figure out a way to get it done and meet ADA requirements as well. So which is good.
That, and I guess we're still, I know we haven't pulled the trigger on the EMS station in Rankin on Tenth Street. Just an update on that.
We just got a, we had a meeting on that on Monday. And we will be, there were some minor questions with regards to the, to the site work and the detention ponds and, and all that. We've cleared that up. My understanding is we're going to be, we're going to be actually doing that via Seymour. And so, so that we can get just a small contractor to come in and, and, and do that. And I think we're going to be applying for a permit next week for, with the city of Rankin. Because we were just waiting to clear one issue up with the site plan.
Yeah, I knew we were moving along. I just, want a quick update.
Yeah, but, and we were waiting to change the ordinance so we can do that. So that, because we didn't have much luck on the last time we did that out.
I know, I know. That's it.
That's it. Very good. And I'm trying to do a better job with the microphone, so I hope you can hear me better.
Thank you.
I pulled it in as far as I can. Tim, do we have a need for executive session?
I do not.
Very good. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
No, sir. You need your executive question minutes, just a moment.
I didn't hear what she said.
We got to approve our executive session.
Oh.
That you, that where the, the general is. We purchased, there was a break down right there on Tenth Street.
Yeah, Tim. You sure we don't need executive session?
We can if you want to do.
Let's get together real quick and just give a brief update.
Sure, okay.
You want to make a motion to go into executive session?
Yeah, entertain a motion to go into executive session. So moved? All in favor? Unopposed, motion carries. Thank you guys for coming out.
We'll do that when we come out, I guess. I got to go to the restrooms.